Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, August twenty second at six thirty PM. So we'll officially follow this board meeting to orders. But to start with the local today, I'm going to start with our directors joining us online. That's okay. We have Director Larson. Can you hear us now, Mr. Larson?
Yes, I can. Thanks.
Okay, perfect. So, Director, I'm just going to be online. I'm sure that Boerjack here, that she can see him. And then certainly this end of the table. They have more to speak for. For the Hoover District one. So very glad to have you back, Miss. Yes. And then, of course. And also, and then Dr. Anderson. And welcome to all of our guests joining us both in person and online. I am always grateful for those that choose to show up and spend their time in the district. Also, thank you for being here. So to kick us off, I'm going to do that to Director Larson. I have your welcome message and team branch.
Okay, so these are the agreements from the courageous conversations that we have for our meetings. Stay engaged, experience discomfort, be vulnerable, speak your truth, expect and accept non closure. And then our land acknowledgement. Land recognition. We in the Tuckwell School District acknowledge that the land where we teach, collaborate, learn and play is the traditional land of the first people of Seattle, Duamish and Makashe people, past and present. And honor with gratitude the land itself and the Duamish and Makashe tribes. As a public school district, we have a responsibility for stewardship of this land. And we strive to work alongside the Duamish and Makashe people who have been living and working here since time immemorial. We further acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of Black and Brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. We remember that Black and Brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. We also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor of survivors over the centuries to today of all immigrant labor, including voluntary and voluntary traffic forced and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as the United States. As a school leadership, a school district leadership, we pledge to recognize and work against systems that have historically and currently enforced and created inequities among the people we serve.
Thank you so much. And now invite those who would like to stand. Like agents. All right, so we'll move to approve our agenda, but with one addition that I don't see us here yet. Okay, should we add it then? Should we add it later? You can.
I'm going to add an hour.
Add an hour, we can. Okay, so just want to sorry, approve the agenda with an amendment adding the old office for our incoming junior representative. So, like, set the motion with that. So. Second, Director Larson?
Second.
Thanks. Sorry, no, that's great. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, Sam approved it. For any reason, I guess we say, where are we going to put that? Whoops. We'll put it in action items or for the action items and for any reason Alex is not able to make it, we'll move that to next meeting. All right, so next is our first opportunity for public comments. There are a variety of different ways that you can offer an engagement for the comment. You have the opportunity to send a written comment prior to the meeting to be read by yourself or you, if you would like to do that. And then you can also rejoin us online, use that way some function or type your means in the chat. And then we have one public comment that was sent in, just want to confirm. I see the individual, just wanted to check if you wanted to read your own public comment. If so, I'm going to have Deb, if possible, just turn to the chat so that they can let you know. But we'll start with the public comment that is here in person, that is.
Okay. And I was typing it, so I can send it to Deb right after this. Hey, all, Joe Majo Foster High School Environmental Science teacher, thanks for allowing me to have a public comment tonight. I just have a quick update about the Foster High School Learning Garden. Things are growing. They're growing so much. If you haven't had a chance to visit the garden this summer, please find the time, go down there, take your family. Whoever you can take, please go check it out. Check out the corn. We have corn growing. It's great. Sunflowers. The sunflowers are taller than anyone's, almost everyone in this room. There's also tons of peppers growing, and we have about five pumpkins. I didn't know how much squash, how big they grow, so the pumpkins are actually taking over. But we're really excited to harvest them. Also, I want to give a huge shout out to Dr. Pedroza, who without hesitation came with me to the garden on an impromptu garden visit. It was really cool to hear about your experience in gardening programs in your past districts. Also, I want to give a huge shout out to the Foster High School Garden Club. Students have been in the garden almost every single day this summer, watering it, taking care of it, leading, making sure that looks good and is creating the beautiful bounty that we have. So huge shout out to them. Thank you. One of the questions I always hear is, who takes care of the garden during the summer? And what I've learned this summer with our first full growing season is it's a simple answer. We all take care of it. When community comes together, students, a paraprofessional over from Foster High School has been in the garden watering, also harvesting some ants, taking care of the potatoes that are growing, we all come together to make sure that the program and the garden is thriving. And just a really quick story before I finish. Received an email late last week from a student, asked me, hey, Mr. Concha Felix salsa, I said, duh, yeah, he doesn't. Apparently, him and his mom went to the garden, they harvested some of the tomatoes, some of the Tomatillos, some of the peppers, and they made this delicious, really spicy, beautiful salsa. So I have surprises for you all. I package them individually, so there's enough for almost everyone in the room, so if y'all would like to try. So my community made salsa from the garden. This is what it's about, right? Yeah, I couldn't be more proud of the work that the students have put in to make this happen, and it's just like a dream come true. So can't wait to share this bounty with you, and thanks for having me. It's, if you don't think spicy, don't even look at it. I'll put it in the bag.
Oh, thank you so much for that amazing update. Wonderful. All right, so we have a comment from online.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me all right? Okay, coolio. All right, great. Okay, so I'm going to get started. My name is Maggie Shea. I'm the Foster High School Librarian. Thank you all for your time. I really appreciate getting the chance to speak tonight. And I just kind of want to preface this with, if I sound super I just, I'll sound very passionate, but just because it's libraries are my passion, books are my passion. So if it comes off a little strong, it's just because I'm like, this is my jam, is caring about libraries. So I just wanted to speak on behalf of the librarians of Tuckwell School District. We're very concerned about this budget proposal that's coming up. When we received our estimated per building budget, we realized we lost over two thirds of last year's budget. The elementary schools, our libraries in elementary schools will now have to choose between like buying subscriptions for resources that support like our marginalized readers. They're going to have to choose between that and buying like books for their library. Instead of being able to support all students, they're going to have to make choices, like we're going to have to make choices that leave some of our most vulnerable students behind. Make no mistake that this reduction of the library budget, it really does mirror things that are happening all across the country. We claim that we support diversity and inclusion, that things like attacks on libraries would just never happen in Tuckwilla. And we understand that cuts need to be made, like, we know. And but no matter the intention behind this, the impact is that we're limiting the students' right to read, and it's blocking access to informational freedoms. So it feels like we can cry financial crisis until we're blue in the face, but the outcome is still going to be the same that's happening in states all across the country. Whether we want it to or not, this budget proposal unfortunately aligns us with those districts that we see on the news and think like, I'm so glad I don't work there, I'm so glad I don't have kids in those districts. But here we are in Tuckwilla, Washington, like defunding libraries, and we hide it under this, like guise of budget cuts. And like, we know we're in a crisis and that cuts are necessary. But what's most telling is that these cuts don't seem to be made equal. And the library program isn't even hit the hardest. Like, I looked into it. I was like, is the library program being targeted? And it's not. It's really not. Like, band was cut by like ninety percent. And it's like, that's not even going to cover like one tuba. And science is going to be working with twenty percent of their budget from last year. And language arts, like reading and writing, was cut by over like sixty percent. And it's clear that there were choices made on which departments were deemed important. But these choices don't seem to align with like what we're trying to do as a district. This budget proposal does not reflect the needs of our students and our educators, not in the fact that we're going to have to do necessary cuts, like we know that. But that those cuts just don't represent what we see in classrooms every day. I, we really just don't think as librarians that you should approve this budget. But knowing you're probably going to have to approve this anyway, because you're being told that this is the only way, as if this just like happens every year that we're in crisis. What I humbly suggest is that we have millions of dollars of ESSR left. After you approve this, you send out ESSR proposal templates to department heads. They fill out what they know their needs are going to be to be able to function within these detrimental cuts. And you approve proposals prioritizing those departments that were cut the most. I know this isn't a long term solution, but it might mitigate some of the overwhelming burdens of our educators. And I do want to say again that this is not something that we take lightly. Librarians, their whole job is protecting the right to read. So if we come off strong, it's just because we care. And I really do appreciate all of your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your, your time and sharing this with us. All right, are there any additional public comments tied up online? Now, so I'm going to just update that Director Boerjack has joined us. So, welcome. Really glad that you were able to meet him. All right, so now not seeing any additional public comments to our reports section of the agenda, starting with the superintendent report.
Great, thank you. I just have a few, a couple announcements. I just want to share a few things around the community. I just want to first thank all the staff that planned and presented the valuable information for the Tuckwilla New Matter of Mutation. I attended many of the staff here, as well as presented, they did an amazing job supporting our new educators and the community. The conversations are really rich and deep, and I'm really excited about the new staff coming to Tuckwilla. So I also want to welcome, officially welcome, our mom, who was councilwoman of the Kent School District. She will be in her role as Director of Special Education, starting on September first officially. And then Tuckwilla School District has two administrators that have been nominated for A B S P awards. Congratulations to Dr. Fred Steff in Tuckwilla Cascade View, and has been nominated for principal here. And then Ms. Goldstone, Assistant Principal of the Elementary Group, and she's been nominated for Assistant Principal of the Year. So I congratulate both of them and wish them well during this process, because they have a lot to still do in order to be considered. So we wish them well. And just some updates coming dates for the district, they're on the website, so please go to the website, it has been highlighted. August twenty eighth and twenty ninth, these are enrollment events. The kindergarten fifth grade enrollment event will be at Farm Day Elementary on the twenty eighth. And the sixth through twelfth grade event is at Foster High School on the twenty ninth. They both start at eleven AM and go to seven PM. So if you are out there and know people who want or need to enroll, please encourage them to come to the events. We will have staff there to help them every step of the way. August thirtieth is our all staff pickup, and so we're going to start in the morning at Foster High School. And we're really excited. It's all about our racial equity focus for the year, and we are excited to have that. And we're welcoming the team that's working with us, and we'll be starting to live in the morning. Breakfast will be served at Foster. August thirty first is the middle language program ribbon hanging at Cascade View at three thirty. So those of you who can't enough, that would be great. And then August thirty first, it's like, boom, 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 right? And visualization as four physicals at Foster High School from eight AM until three PM. And then, of course, the tenth of one, first day of school, September fifth, first day of school, or not, fifth, first day of school, fair to be that. The day after later than September fifth, Tuesday, first day of school, and then early release day for dinner. So we're excited about that. So that's all I can give you for that. Any questions, comments?
Okay, the next report is the update on the Board Recruitment Campaign. I'm just going to kind of roll this together by Director Report. Because that's been a key thing that I've worked on. So as folks know, we've been working with the P S E S D to kind of support, really, they have been generous in offering their resources to help support us in really the type of board that we, that we need. So we have been, we had the opportunity to put together a video. I'm super excited to see that end product of, so came in and did a little bit of recording for that. We had multiple students, teachers, parents, board members from other districts, other neighboring districts all come together to support making the board video. I find the intent of this all, this is specifically being made in this moment to support our efforts here in Tuckwilla. The P S E S D is also considering this an opportunity to just continue to build their toolkit for other districts as they may continue to run up against vacant positions like we have. And we're certainly not the only district who has had this, had these types of vacancies over the last several years. So really excited about that. We are also working on, although we're actually not sure exactly where we're going to possibly be getting a radio spot on on, on some Spanish radio outlets. We're really excited about that, particularly as we consider, you know, really wanting to make sure that our board recruitment efforts are really seeking folks that, you know, continue to represent more of the community, other students and the staff that we're serving. So really excited about those continued things. We are hoping that we will have an application for the district that has been vacant, which is District three. Thank you, I just hate to speak out of everyone's support. District three, we're really hoping to have someone apply in September to then be able to fill and vote in that position that person in in October. That way, we're going into November with ideally our full slate, full, and how all the seats filled. Which brings me to an exciting update around position two. For those of you that don't know, the filing period, the special filing period closed at the beginning of August. And there were two positions that nobody filed for. One was District Two, which our Director Boerjack will be at her current position. And she has chosen not to run again, and so that position will be empty come November. But we did already receive an application for that assumed to be a vacant position, which is really exciting. So we, as a board, will have a little bit of conversation about what steps we might want to take to basically get that, whatever process we might want to do, so that there's not a lag in, in time of somebody in next seat. So we could do different options. We could go through the process, do the interview, and potentially appoint with a start date following when Director Boerjack's term would end. The benefit to doing that is that could allow that individual to attend the loss of board conference with us, which is a really valuable place to start as an incoming board member, particularly your understanding of the support is limited. Like, I know I definitely was coming into this role. So that's an option. We'll, we'll have a little bit of session back at the, at the session at our next board meeting. We've got a little bit of time. We're really excited to know that even the small efforts that we have continued to do are getting that awareness out to folks, and it's going to give us some really positive results. So that was both the board recruitment update as well as any questions, thoughts, comments on? Right? Right on. All right, other directors. Nurse. I have not been to one except that I'm looking forward to yet another productive school year. Director Boerjack?
Yeah, the only thing, the only thing that I would report is that our registration process is very cumbersome. But our staff at the admin office, as well as in the schools, have been working diligently to get the kids that are living on my campus registered, and I really appreciate their work. It's a lot of paperwork, especially for those who are not English speakers. But they've worked hard to get these kids ready for school, and I appreciate that. And that's my report.
Thank you. And Director Larson?
So I'm going to start off with the WASDA, so the School Directors Association, is having their General Assembly in September. And the thing that happens at the General Assembly is WASDA votes on various values statements, which they call permanent positions and legislative positions that the organization will take in the upcoming legislative session. And I've attached to the agenda item here, two items. One is kind of a spreadsheet which lists all the different things that will be considered. And then the full book of all the the details of all those things, which can be a little overwhelming. But I wanted to see, to give anybody an opportunity. And what I would say is, if you want to look at these, and then maybe we could get fifteen minutes at the, at the September work session, if we need it, to talk about anything that people are concerned. Generally, so the way these, these work is they go through two committees, the permanent positions go through what's called the Resolutions Committee. And they come back with pass, do not pass recommendations for the body as a whole. And then the legislative positions, the same thing for the legislative position. So you kind of see that on this, on this spreadsheet here. Generally speaking, people, you know, kind of vote for the recommendations from the committee. And so my intention is to do that with a couple of exceptions, and I'll just highlight the couple of exceptions. The first one, the number one on the, on the spreadsheet list is there's something that's kind of esoteric. It's called weighted voting. So the way these, these positions are put before the assembly, which is representatives of all the school districts, is you know, do you, do you want to pass it or not pass it? And so, and generally, initially, the first run of it, every district gets one vote. And so, and then what happens is if it's close, or the big districts get, has something that they don't agree with, then they go to what's called a weighted vote, in which case each district gets a different number of votes depending on how many students are in the, in the district. So, you know, for example, Seattle gets, I think nineteen votes, because they have the biggest numbers. Since we get, in our district, we get two votes. And so there's been a discontent among, as you might imagine, of a lot of the smaller districts, particularly in Eastern Washington. They don't, they feel like they're getting run over by some of the big districts on the west side, which is where most of the votes are. And so they're putting this one up to change the bylaws so that there would be no weighted vote, and every district would get the same number of votes. The, it's interesting, the Resolutions Committee was, put that forward with a do pass. I think my intention is to vote knowing that it's a little bit counterintuitive, because we're a small district, and you might say, well, you know, why wouldn't we vote for it? But what I've seen over the years is that the a lot of the progressive positions that come through here are, you know, we're in alignment with the big districts on, basically. I mean, a lot of the big districts are, you know, around us, Seattle, Highline, Kent, all those districts. And so generally speaking, I think for the benefit of our students, I think that the progressive positions are good. And so that's kind of my thinking about voting. I guess it'll be interesting, it'll likely, the way it'll go, I'm sure is it, it may get voted for, that is to eliminate weighted votes, but then the weighted vote provision in the current bylaws will get activated, and the big districts will override it. So that's probably the way it's going to go, anyway. So, anyway, there's that one. I did want to just highlight, so we, this district submitted a couple of position, you know, permanent positions. And one of them was basically that said that the WASDA should have the position that students' civil rights cannot be overridden by local control. So one of the big things in this state is, you know, local control, and the local school board should have the decision to do kind of anything and everything. And, you know, that one, there, there needs to be some, some sideboards on that. And particularly, you know, last time in the legislature, there was one that came forward to require school districts to include LGBTQ students in the curriculum, and it went down. It didn't, just because the Democrats didn't want to take the time to harbor it through, but it, I'm sure it'll come back, and, you know, so this one, this one came through with a do pass, so I anticipate this one will go through without any trouble. And then the other one, there's a couple of them, achievement and opportunity gaps. And the, if you read those, they talk about encouraging districts to develop equity policy, comprehensive equity policies. And in that thing, they used to have the, it was called race inequity policy. And so they, there, there are people who want to eliminate the word race from that. They did last year, and so now I, we put it in a position to put it back. And, and so those, those two actually went through the Resolutions Committee with do not pass. So I'm going to argue that on two points. One is, you know, our students, when we, when we did our race equity policies, our student, we originally came out with equity policy. And then our students, they know you need to have race in there. So that's number one. And then number two, is just if you have an understanding of the history of this country, you know, most of the equity gaps in our system, you know, whether it's education or healthcare or whatever, wealth and so forth, you know, gets its basis from, from racial discrimination and white supremacy and so forth. So that could be an interesting vote. We'll see how that one goes. So those are the only two, so are only ones that I'm going to vote something different on. So like I say, if anybody, yeah, we can discuss if there's any other ones that people see that, you know, you want to have a discussion, we can discuss at the next, at the next meeting. I wanted to talk a little bit about guns. So this last year in this district, we had a really tragic year in terms of, you know, we lost one student who was shot and killed at a bus stop, metro bus stop at five o'clock on Sunday across from Foster High School. We also, there was a, a Um, we also, there was a, another student that was shot in the leg. And there was another recent graduate that was killed down at a um, uh, a movie theater down in Kent. So um, you know, it's one of the things that, and, and then there was the um, shooting up in Seattle. At um, uh, Ingram High School, uh, where a student was shot and killed. And I was listening to KUOW did a really good piece on kind of what went on there. And how that gun got into the high school. And um, it's interesting because um, originally it came from somebody's house. Like there was a fourteen year old in the house, the gun was not locked up. And the fourteen year old took it and showed it to his friends. And then one of his friends took it against his will and showed it to some other people. And it apparently went through a couple of cycles before it got to uh, the hands of somebody at Ingram High School. Who then uh, shot and killed this person. And um, so there's, there's kind of uh, two things that that brings up. Number one, you know, um, locking up guns. So you know, last month, the Tukwala Police Department had a, have a, had a um, giveaway for um, gun locks. Uh, for the community, which is um, great. I think I, I'd like to see us, you know, as a district, uh, support that and publicize that. I don't think we've publicized it to my knowledge. I'm not sure, not sure I really knew it existed until afterwards on social media. But anyway, I think that's a really important thing uh, to start with. And then the other thing is um, you know, students, uh, so we had a number in this, in this uh, KUOW piece. There was a number of like fourteen, fifteen year old students who didn't, um, they were kind of passing around guns. And so, you know, when you think about where do fourteen, fifteen year olds learn about guns? Get their impressions of guns in this society, it's video games and film and um. Uh, you know, TV, things like that, which aren't really um, real. Um, there's a lot of education, I think, that needs to go on with students about. You know, if you see a, if you, if you run into a gun from your friends, you know, report it, get it out of there. I, I'm not the expert on how you do this education. But you know, I always, what I say is, I mean, we're an education institution. And so educating our students about uh, the, the real danger of guns and the importance of. You know, getting them out of the, the um, population um, as much as possible. Um, I think is a really good thing. And I, I think, you know, that would be a great opportunity for us to um, collaborate with the police department. They may know some people and I notice we're, I mean, we're having discussions with police department already on, on, on SROs. I might be able to throw that in the next time to find out if there's ways that we can provide some education for our students. And I, the other thing, I guess I just interested in, and I don't know Dennis, uh, whether you, you know, I, I really love to hear from students on this issue. I mean, it was a, like I said, it was a pretty tragic year last year. And you know, what are, what are students feeling about it? And do students have ideas for, you know, things that could be done or anything, anything like that? So um, you don't need to do it right now, but you know, just think about uh, I'd really get, like to have that. Um, the other thing, uh, I was, you know, it was, is kind of tied to this and that is uh, the mental health. So our student rep, uh, Dennis um, did a really nice um, uh, survey that we saw. Uh, presented, uh, I think last month, the mental health presentation. And you know, there was a whole bunch of recommendations that came there. And to my knowledge, we just kind of, to my knowledge, at this point, we've just kind of let those sit there. And so I'd like to kind of um, pull those back up. I mean, a lot of it, apparently, you know, the surveys came out that, you know, so many, so, so many students weren't aware of the mental health. Um, resources that were available to them. So that's another kind of education area that we need to make sure our students uh, know about it. Um, I was listening to um, a podcast and they're, they're talking about the, the power. And I know uh, Dennis is on one of the, I think suicidal hotlines of peer counseling on these issues. And so, you know, I, one of the things that always comes up with mental health is oh, we don't have enough mental health professionals in the system, which is true. But you know, maybe there's other ways to uh, and you know, uh, education and, and that. So I think we need to, to um, go back and make, you know, come up with some actual plans for what we're gonna do. There was a whole, there's a couple pages of recommendations about, you know, um, what we could do. And so anyway, I'd like to see that, um, maybe get on a work session at, at some point. Um, I did wanna report on um, uh, Director Hoover and I met with the Tukwala Pool folks. Uh, and so what they're up to is, is they're in the early process of trying, they, they feel like they need to expand that uh, pool up there. Uh, there's a lot of things that they need to add to that. And they're talking about um, you know, staying within their kind of area up there. So they're not talking about pushing out into the garden or anything like that, you know, keeping it up. And there's a lot of grass and so forth around the pool. And so they're talking about staying within that, in that zone, so before anybody gets excited about that. But um, and so they're, they're doing the preliminary studies on that. So anyway, I ju- I just wanted to report that we had that, so everybody knows that's going on. They will, I think, come back and um, you know, give us some reports as they go through their studies and, and what they come up with and, and everything like that. So um, and the last thing I just wanted to kind of celebrate was. So there's this program called uh, Donors Choose, which is a national program for, where teachers can apply to get um, resources for their classrooms. And the, it's been around since two thousand ten. The Tukwala School District, cause I keep track of this, uh, just passed the quarter million mark, um, uh, two hundred fifty thousand dollars over the, over the ten years. And so um, good job by all the teachers who've um, over the years, many, many of our teachers have gotten uh, everything's from instructional technology to books. To, you know, classroom supplies, to all kinds of things, educational games and like. So um, anyway, just wanted to kind of recognize that milestone and, and recognize all the teachers who've, who've done that over the years. So that's it.
Thank you very, very much, Director Larson. Um, just to add to the, the bit about the pool, um, uh, if you live in the pool, you probably received a postcard. Um, inviting me to participate in the study, so please do that. Uh, or in the strong areas, cause I know that they also serve folks in, um, the hearing, it's exact, I'm writing. Um, so definitely do that. Um, it's a, I'm excited about a kind of coming out that we need the possibilities of just strengthening the partnership between the school district and the pool. Um, and really, really, um, for lack of words, leveraging the resources that we both can offer each other. Um, as we should be during much of our, we're so excited about that, thanks for bringing that up. All right, um, welcome. Very nice to have you here, we're gonna do your office here a little bit. We're gonna do your office here a little bit. Um, all right, and then just to confirm, is there anything you wanted to share about your time since you're left? What do you mean?
Um, I mean, I haven't done much with the board, I was away from the select for three years.
Oh, what have you been doing?
Oh, you went to school. And then the pre-con program and constant glitch, uh, starting numerous years. Yeah.
Um, great, thanks. Um, so maybe you can set up people who can add to if you want to. All right, so we want to do our board discussion, oh, just getting consent agenda. Um, all right, so you said so much, you have a free work and send the data. So.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, it stands approved. Next is our board discussion um, for the SRO plan and update. Um, a few weeks ago, um, Dr. Jones and I had the opportunity to meet with um, Chief Driever. Um, and talk a little bit about, um, just kind of actually recapping the, 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 he, he was here at a meeting in July. Um, and we had a lot of um, questions and concerns around um, the SRO plan that was presented to us for approval. Like, we had the opportunity, we had a really great, um, honest, open conversation about that. And so I, I'd love if you're willing to share a little bit about that.
Yeah, so um, one of the concerns that came up was just been sharing that. Uh, student voice was part of co-creation of what it could look like. Um, while there was some feedback from staff and there wasn't community, there was some school engagement, some level. Um, just that we wanted to make sure that any plan to bring back uh, SROs into school. That we actually need, um, specifically because we know there's disproportionate um, uh, level of uh, focus. On um, our male population, specifically, specifically Latin and female males. And so uh, that is something that uh, we all agreed that we're gonna do. I already have a meeting set with the two principals, uh, Shaw Walter and Foster High School. To, to start thinking about and planning and beginning of those conversations with the Latin union and other groups. Uh, and just sort of running through what the current plan looks like. And what are things that they wanna see um, in that plan? Uh, what do they want some accountability on? Um, and then I think that was um, Chief Driever. And then he also really wants us to make sure that uh, when, if and when they do enter, if there's an agreement made. That we are all in agreement and really have clear understanding of what it's gonna be looking like. And so uh, it was an interesting conversation, I was, you know, for my first time I got to meet uh, with him. But I think we're all in a good place and we all agree that we're not starting until everyone is really um, in a good place and understanding. Because I think the most important part is, I, I, I having served as the principal of the class and have to deal with this. And knowing sports schools is, it, it's very clear what it looks like when things are great, right? And things are really positive. And it's also really clear what it looks like when uh, there's a serious crisis, like there's an incident full. It's all the face in the middle, right? Uh, where, how do we actually really make sure we're really clear on what that is? When it's at whose role, who's responsibility, what is the parent's role, what is the school role? Um, and, and what's the students' rights and all of that? So that's the face that we need there. Not, 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 not the positive, the interaction piece and not the, because we both know, we all know. Uh, those are really, can be really helpful and needed for, um, especially very positive. But when there's, there's understanding about that and that's when um, there's confusion and we don't want that to happen in our schools. So that's what my, that, and that's from my experience as well.
So um, we are not putting a plan, any plan back on uh, the table for board approval. Until um, there's been um, I think just more established um, input um, from every single student possible. Um, and I think one of the things that we talked a little bit about is, you know, how can we really ensure that the conditions of those spaces. Or in wiring, you know, people to get input are safe. Um, and um, you know, not um, where they're, they're not feeling worried about what they might say. Or potentially being triggered by the fact that they're in a place with um, a police officer. Um, so how can we really set the conditions in partnership um, to really get um, real, again, honest uh, inputs? So that we can um, really do a better program that is gonna, is, is gonna work. Um, and um, and, and yeah. So thoughts, questions uh, about that? Um, so we'll be probably bringing this back up fairly regularly as things such as having to happen. And as some of those, those opportunities are being available in the schools. Um, but uh, what thoughts, questions do folks have about that right now?
So any idea for timeline? It all depends on ability to communicate.
Yes, yeah.
Well, I want to say, before starting with the meeting first with the principals. And we're gonna start engagement, it would be great for the student reps and the board to be part of those conversations. Um, our board will focus on safety for all students. And, and then I believe we're gonna be planning some student focus groups um, in the spring. So that, that help would be great. Um, we hope to have at least some update. I think that I hope we can get this like in two months. Um, but we did tell um, Chief Driever that we would be having another meeting, I believe, that would be started January. And giving an update, so that we can then um, whatever feedback we get from the students, then we can sort of work together. And then they suggested if there needed more engagement, that we think of maybe getting some type of, that the faculty could do that if we needed to. So they're wanting, they wanna, they wanna get this right with us. I will say that the, the, they wanna get this right with us, like they said, uh, only from the conversation we had with them, but they, they wanna work with us, so, yeah.
I think just to kind of add to our meeting, I think for me, a few things also came up in that discussion around the ways that we have opportunities. Continued lots of continued opportunities in our district, um, to think even about like how we, how we navigate this current, right? Um, and ways in which that we as a district might be reinforcing, um, uh, you know, some of the um, pathways, right? Um, that, that negative, never negatively impact our students. Um, so you know, we'll also be continuing to engage in um, more intense workshops and conversations about um, understanding the whole teams. What's going on with, with, uh, within our schools and getting aligned across our schools um, as well, so. Any additions we can add? Thank you, always welcome to jump in.
On that, thank you.
All right, great, we're gonna move on from that discussion. Um, and which are questions, bold and presentations. Uh, so just kind of as a reminder, um, the board gets opportunity to review these questions and make presentations, just like anyone um, can do from board docs. Um, and we submit questions um, the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Um, they're just kind of initial questions that come up for us, um, those get answered. Uh, oftentimes those answers are added to the board agenda heading to slow for folks to see the kind of stuff that they're bringing out. So we'll take the opportunity to have some more discussion, I mean, throughout time as well. So we'll start with the uh, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget, January is gonna be a good one. Okay.
I can. Sorry, um. I guess um, I was kind of curious in reaction to uh, the public comment that we have. My understanding is that uh, there is a process or gonna be a process in place after the budget is approved. To, to gather input for what we can use the S R dollars for, additional S R dollars for, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so it sounds like the public comment, uh, you know, we're getting that. Uh, there may be some, yeah, the question is how to, who, who gets involved in that process? But that process is, is in place. So I know there's uh, there may be some restrictions on, well, I know there's, there are some restrictions on it, what S R dollars can be used for. But hopefully uh, they can be maybe, yeah, used to fill some of the library uh, requests at this point. Um, I um. I guess, so on the budget in general, so you know, we've been through um, many years of um. Getting budgets that say there is, you know, a one percent, that there's gonna be a one percent fund balance. And then um. You know, at the end of the year, you know, recently there's been like eight, nine, nine, four. And so, you know, I, and I understand that I believe some of that is because of the nature of the uh, chief financial officer making very conservative um. Uh, estimates, which, you know, I think that's appropriate, that's what you need to do. But um, so in the past years, I didn't really worry about that, you know, even though we have a policy that the fund balance needs to be six percent. Um, but this last year, you know, the, the world seems to have changed. Because the last budget that we had last year approved, beginning of the year was about, said we've got about a one, one percent fund balance. And we ended up with a one percent fund balance. So um, I'm kind of um, so I'm more, I'm concerned about um. You know, the, this one percent fund balance, as I said before, is gonna, you know, if we, we do that for now a number of years. That's gonna destroy our, our bond rating. And I'm, I'm really concerned because when you have those kind of bond rating or those kind of uh, fund balances of one percent. Then inevitably you need to borrow, uh, we do this borrowing thing in the middle of the year, borrow from our capital projects fund. But the general fund has to pay back, pay, pay that back in interest. So it's like, that's just deep, digging the hole even deeper, you know, if we have to do that. So you know, I'm concerned that, you know, we need, I don't know what the number is that we can get to. That would cause uh, us to not need to do those inter-fund uh, transfers. But you know, that's one source of um, of saving some money. And you know, I mean, I guess. You know, I mean, I guess we are where we are, but. I would, I I'd have a tough time voting for this budget, except unless if there's some. Some real uh commitment to uh during the rest of the year to really work to get that that one percent up. To two or three percent and you know, one of those areas, I think, is. How we fund um our uh special education uh funds and. I think we can get more of that funded out of a Apple Health or Medicaid program rather than having to cut it out of our own uh budget. Um the other thing that I was looking at and um I've been having some, you know, um. Fairly, you know, uh several conversations going on with Representative Burquist, so on this issue, um. You know, the amount of uh leave that our staff is taking. Because of the new twenty twenty uh paid family and medical leave um bill that was introduced by this by the. Um uh legislature and and so it allows for like, you know. Uh three or four months of uh leave to be taken. And um the problem is, I mean, that's a nice thing, but. You know, it's like the legislature forgot to fund school districts to to do that, and so the the whole system for how um. The the legislature funds school districts has been in case in in place since twenty eleven and it's it allows for four. Um you know, um uh leave days per year. And and the subs are like a hundred and fifty dollars, a hundred fifty one dollars, which. So that hasn't been raised since two thousand and eleven, and so it's way, way out of whack for what what's really going on and particularly it's out of whack for. You know, what's been going on with the uh paid family leave, so. I think I, I I mean, I've started this and and Representative Burquist is, he uh agrees that he's starting to work on it, just to give you an idea. For us, um that expense of getting subs for all the people taking leaves is about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and we get funded for about seventy five thousand. So we get funded for about ten percent of um what we get, um we're not, uh we are one of the highest um. Leave per uh per teacher in the state, I think we're number seven on that list. Uh we're not wildly, I mean, the state average is fifteen percent, uh what school districts get funded for for that. And you know, we've got ten, so anyway, I I'd really like to see, I mean, that's a that's a huge amount of money and I really wanna make sure that we're. Gonna go aggressively after uh the legislature on that one too. You know, it probably not likely, I guess, to get funded this year, but at least um I think um, yeah, that's that's a big area we need to. We need to work on and, you know, the other other big thing, I I need a kind of a commitment to. Like I said, I'm not sure what the number is, but to get to a point where we're not taking loans from our from our capital projects funding uh funding uh. Because that's just, that's just digging the digging the, you know, the the hole deeper, so um so. Yeah, and anyway, so if I could probably vote for this, if. If there's a commitment to working on some of those things plus some other things, but. Yeah, it's it's a it's a tough one because I don't wanna see us come in with another one percent, so thanks.
Um I'm wondering it uh kind of go back to basics about budgets, um. You know, we set a budget, uh we work with that all year. Uh we come to the end of the year, we see how we expended that budget or didn't expend it, and then we build a new budget. For the next year, uh that's kind of simplified, but um what what I'm wondering is that. When I see when I see that departments have been cut, I. Usually understand that to be because they underspent, we had projected higher. For them than what they needed, now needed is the word here. Because have departments underspent because they were afraid to spend? Or have we actually bonded budgeted more than what was needed? And I think there's something in the middle there that we need to explore to find out. Why they were underspent, why um I mean, are are these, are they deferring things? Um or is it, does it just not cost as much as we thought it was gonna cost? And so I guess I'm just trying to figure out how do we have those conversations? Because if the budget is built off of actually the expenses. And not the last budget, that looks different and that has to be compared in a different way. Than if we're comparing budget to budget, does that make any sense to anybody?
Um makes a lot of sense, we have actually gained your objective that even from the in the office standpoint, if we're looking at. Programs that that did spend the 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 full scope with their budget, you know. I I mean, not now within education, but when I was operating a budget and program, I knew, right, that if I didn't spend that money. That might get taken out of my budget the next year, so there might be the settlement of, oh, I'm gonna spend that, right? So then really going back to what is need um versus um versus, you know, where. Where's that spending really, really necessary, right? Uh so getting back to like the 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 root need of uh what it costs um to to really genuinely run that program. Um and then where might be the overspending perhaps in some of those things and then shift. Back to some of these programs that maybe underspent because. They maybe did feel a little bit of with fear or they didn't know how it was to spend on the. Um and I think there 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 are a lot of reasons why that might be, um particularly knowing. You know, some of the nuances of what I understand, you know, uh uh just around folks not not always being certain how to navigate, you know. Um the 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 system, um so yeah, I would be I would be really interested in analysis of that as well. Um so I'm not just hoping from budget year, budget year, but really what is the. Needed expense to operate the program in a in an effective way and one that really honors the needs of the students um. And also want to show our our where we're at with our, you know, our budget limitations.
I think that also would be interesting to have a conversation about how the invested parties are being included in the decision making. Um because I know context working on like high um. Making certain they are included in those conversations, how are we doing that?
Um so that's the question about the, that's one of the things we have to talk about with. I think we have to make some plans, right, about when we're talking about what the future looks like for the budget. Um and I think how do we get voice into that, um because we're not just talking about this year, we're talking about two years, three years out. Uh because we're talking about getting it up to a two percent or one percent, whatever you're talking about, you're after Larson. That's gonna take us, it's not, it's not a one-year plan, it's gonna be taking a two-year plan and three-year plan, and those are the conversations we need to start having as a team.
Yeah, and I would just um like to add, um I appreciate passion, like passion drives us all, right? But for transparency, I would like to say that the um library budget was given a hundred thousand dollars in S R dollars. So I just wanna be very transparent, um I believe the ask came in the twenty one twenty two school year. They did not spend all the dollars, so I rolled the balance over for them to spend in the twenty two twenty three school year. So between S R two and a portion of S R three, they were given a hundred and three thousand dollars on top of their regular budget, I'm not saying that their budget was cut because of that. But the ask was asked and I delivered, right? Same thing with language arts, I think that was brought up, they asked me for a hundred thousand dollars, shouldn't say me because it's not my money, they asked the district. For a hundred thousand dollars, they submitted a proposal, it was accepted and they got a hundred thousand dollars, so the process works. Um the other piece is um we have budget forms, we have the community um. Uh. The uh the advisory committee, so we have different opportunities for voices to be heard at different times of the year. So I encourage everyone who's listening to be um a part of that, to help be part of the process, the input, the change um. And in addition to that, I do also provide an S R update um on my budget section course to kind of keep everybody in the loop. And then I will make sure with working with communication that maybe some of that information gets pushed differently, so people can have access to it on a more regular basis. Thank you.
I have some things that I want to say, but I forgot, so. Didn't come back, but I know, that's okay, um. So I I guess I'm hearing some asks um uh for whether that be a. Certain commitment to um. Getting our fund balance uh or any fund balance um from from what's listed here. Um I think. I I worry and I also wanna trust, right, I worry about um asking for commitment when, you know, I feel like we have been. You know, really, really pushing um and asking for what, you know, what. What strategies and solutions, right, and we've been asking for the last about a year and a half, at at least very much since I've been before and. Seeing that we are, we are, you know, our end fund balance is declining, right, we know our enrollment is, we know, we know, we've got some great. Um uh uptake in enrollment, which is exciting. Um you know, so I guess I I I do worry about like how much weight even a commitment holds um and also on the interest, right? Um so I'm I'm that's just kind of what's sitting with me, uh I just wonder.
Always add one other thing to what um Chief Bertrand said. Um we are committing as a group to meet as a team to sort of look through all of our budgets. And see where we can actually reduce, maybe reallocate and realign. Uh that's one of the things we have going to be making, we also are going to do some communication, we're gonna work together and figure out how to communicate so that. Staff and community and schools are given more transparency in some of the conversations we're having. And also provide a way for them to provide additional good. The last thing I'm gonna say is we also are going to have two work sessions. Here with the board, so one uh in November, we're gonna have a work session to sort of. Uh can you do some of that work as a team, come together with some recommendations, but targeting the additional reductions in twenty three twenty four. Uh that's one of the things we're looking at, special ed, we're looking at all of those pieces, the Medicaid, we actually already are having conversations around that. Director Larson, so all of these ideas are being inputted into these conversations and especially when we onboard our our new um staff member. Making sure that they're aware of some of the recommendations from the board, especially when I'm looking at their current contracts. Uh specialization, one of the things we're also looking at is external contracts, seeing where we can maybe reduce or re-uh uh recommit with some. When we also think there's time, but sometimes you can negotiate. Uh some of those things that we have some external contracts, so all those things are we are we're looking at right now. Uh so we're gonna do the session, however, with what our early recommendations are after doing some work together. Uh and then we're gonna do another one, we hope the target in February is gonna be what we're looking at to forecast over the next two to three years, and so. This is work that the team's committed to doing, uh we wanna get schools started first. Um but I think uh I mean, we have to include our schools, we have to include our educators. We do have the budget period, the advisory committee, they've been part of this work. I really do believe that 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 group has to still continue to help us prioritize. And sort of help us synthesize additional information marketing, right? So um there's a process in place, uh but we will continue to work on our content communication piece and then hopefully we'll have some. People interested in the work session, we go through this and and then talk this through because uh if you can't, it's not a one and done type of thing. Um it's gonna take a typically a couple meetings, a couple times us looking through our own analysis and uh we're sort of looking to your better departments in the budget and. And educators also that have probably some really good ideas as well, so um this is not our, we'll be continuing to talk about this for a while this year.
Just kind of was one other additional thing I have, you know, I think for we continue understanding of community, um you know, around. District budgets is that there's so many things that are outside of our control, right? Um and we are funded um by so many different streams and um as you know, Director Larson works very hard. Um at kind of with the legislature too and informs us about, you know, the difficulties with all these unfunded inputs, right? Um and so one of the things that um that, you know, um continue to try and encourage us to do is increase our partnerships, right? Um to find ways where we can really lean on um partners in the community or other um entities that um can support some of these. Um these areas where our budget unfortunately just leaves us at a little bit of a deficit. Um so you know, not to uh um hone in on the library, but I mean, I was just speaking about, you know, maybe there's an opportunity to increase our partnership with the King County library system. It's just right there, right, so how can we really leverage other, um whether it be government entities or just nonprofits, CBOs around. To say, hey, we're really struggling right now with this piece in our budget. Can you help us, how can we utilize each other's resources, so that is also a strategy that we have have um, you know, continue to to ask and. I will lose support, so we can't be experts at everything um i- in the district, we just can't, um and we cannot fund everything either, unfortunately, that's just not. Um not a reality of the money that we are given from the state um and 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 better, so.
So I'm curious, uh usually I don't see an action item to approve the budget this time, my understanding is. It needs to be approved before the end of August, is that correct?
It's one.
There is.
It's one.
It's uh. Mine now.
But to answer your question, yes, it needs to be approved by August thirty first.
Oh, I see, oh, sorry, yeah, I missed that, sorry, yeah, okay.
Thank you. Um okay, um on to the next day, um the summer school uh data and analysis. What additional question do you folks have about this? And welcome. So.
Thank you, glad to be here.
Okay, uh I think just one, J- John, I have to kind of the the list of key partnerships and kind of going back to the the state and I have run the budget. Um which of the community partner groups are funded by the district versus being kind of funded by themselves and just partnering with us?
For summer program, particularly?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm ready for your full eight days already, yeah.
So how does that sometimes my questions don't come on? Later, you can open the report and I can go over and tell you. Sure, yeah, thank you. And no champions, that's twenty first century funding, right? Um next is the International Rescue Committee.
So the International Rescue Committee is through a grant um that we get through school about Washington for our refugee services, so. The money comes to us and then we fund the IRC, okay? Swan and Urban League. Urban League is um a combination of community, maybe for some of their pieces and some of it is on continuing contracts that we have with them.
So.
So both, yeah.
Okay, and then after school, all stars.
Us. Even twenty first century. I believe is the source.
And here at three hundred community partners. Uh page five, which one? Correct. Consider going here up.
It's us too, we have a grant that funds some of that, I'm sorry.
And then Spirit Sound Skill Center.
I'm not sure about that one, that's not one of the problems I oversee. O S P I.
And then thirteen cultural gaps.
That is an organization that received a grant specifically to support refugee students and what we provided them was space and. Uh communication with our students via our family liaison and then they ran their programming here, so.
Great.
Their funding for their program was theirs, but the space was ours that we provided to them.
And then, you know, size, yeah.
We funded that, I guess I would say, again, sort of in partnership, University of Washington did not charge us for any camp attendance. But the busing and the staff costs were borne by Tech Willa School District, so that would be a combined funding source.
Here we go, okay, thank you. In particular, if you think about the ones that might be funded. You know, just think about again, where might, you know. Trying to say that because obviously these programs benefit our students, right? Obviously, um, and want to keep programs that benefit our students. So like what, you know, I think just something to think about, you know, as we consider, continue to consider budget implications. Um, you know, where are the ways that, um. Yeah, I don't know. At least you can say really even kind of maximizing our impact, right? Um, but you know, really making sure that we're investing in programs that. Serve the young people that in a way that we need it to and the young people that we need and also many, right? Um, I'm not being very clear, I'm not trying to, but, um, so I'm just saying.
I could respond a little bit.
Please, yeah.
I, I think that as we've been looking ahead to, um, reflecting on, um, programs we've funded through grants or through contracts services. And looking ahead to this year, as Dr. Pedrosa said, some that were committed to, but some we're looking at that. Are there some ways, maybe a couple of different programs serve the same need? And maybe a way to do a little scaling back on a couple of them in combines. We still get the benefits of the kids who are most needy and, um, who, uh, right is to benefit from that program. So those are some things we're looking at, maybe not chopping, but combining a little bit, skated backs overall. It saves a lot of money and still gets the kids the programs they deserve.
Any other additional questions, um, regarding summer school?
I don't even, I was looking at the, I, that's the irony for assessments. Uh, it's for the brass that over between person between spring to summer. It's. I don't know why the reason of this, but it's interesting to see that like fourth grade, uh, you see kind of. They get worse between spring versus summer and you know, if. The purpose of our summer program is to reduce learning loss during the summer. I'm wondering if you have any ideas as to why we're seeing a decrease in our student performance over the summer.
Great question. I wish I had that intellect when I was a high school student. Um, the, the part of that is that there we, we all know you're currently students, we've been students, teacher. We know that over summer, just when you're not focused on the same academics, you're naturally going to lose some of that. And you come back in fall, teachers all know that your teacher's second grade, you know, you have to start partway through first grade to catch them up again and then move forward. So this actually, um, students who have the summer program was targeted to the skills they're ready, their readiness to learn. They, they can either gain a little or they lose much less than they would have lost if they hadn't had a program. So it's, um, reducing loss. So it looks like, you might think, we didn't gain anything compared to they have students having gone, it would have been much more lost. So they're more ready to move ahead to the next grade.
And is the assessments based on only the students with Tuckum or not? Or does that also take into account like that absence?
Obstacles from the program?
Yeah.
I think it's, um, all the students who participated, whether they might have missed a couple of days or not, they still took the assessment. So you're right, there, there could be a deeper analysis they needed to see what, um. What impact it might have had by how many absences.
And do you, I don't know if you have it off the top of your head, do you know the amount of students that were absent this year?
I don't know. We can find out.
Cause I, yeah, cause I was just asking, cause I wanted to compare it to, compared to last year. Because last year we had, I don't know, a lot, but it was a lot coming forward like the students that needed. So it would be interesting to see and then compare those students who didn't actually versus those who did.
Mm-hmm, that would be.
Interesting, yeah. Um, I just want to share a little bit of appreciation for, oh, and I just, uh, I'm going to first off. Uh, and I just, just a appreciation that I'm already seeing, uh, uh, evidence that y'all heard. Right reflections from staff, students, uh, parents, um, and are beginning to implement that as you are, I was starting to think about next year. So I would appreciate, um, the actions that's in the connection to, um, I think little things like that are what make folks feel like, um, their voices actually being. Um, value is really seen kind of immediate responses and immediate action, um, that, that is responsive.
Right.
Yeah, I was just gonna share anecdotally what I saw, uh, with the summer school. Um, it was project-based learning, which I totally support. And I don't think that our data and now analysis really reflects what happens with project-based learning. And the engagement that the students had with one another and with the tools that they were using. So I, I don't know how we get that, but I think part of what happens with a summer school is not just to stop the academic loss. But to keep the school engagement. And these kids kept their engagement with one another and with the teachers. And when you went from classroom to classroom, you saw a big difference in which teachers knew how to do project-based learning. And which ones were really struggling with, uh, this kind of learning. Um, and I, I think that points out some work that we need to do also. But you know, they worked on these, uh, birds that looked like airplanes and learned so much about flight and. All the different, uh, subject areas that can be brought together around flight. And, uh, I found one of those birds in my office the other day. That had been kind of taken apart, which is what they were supposed to do, take them apart, put it back together, fly them, see what works, see what doesn't. But it reminded me of how these kids were so engaged with these projects. And I really encourage us to, uh. Uh, build on that kind of teaching, because I, what I saw was student engagement. And learning and working together and being excited about what they were doing. So that's just anecdotally, I don't think that shows up in our debt, uh, data analysis.
Doug, is that one thing? Now we have a fourth grade story. My favorite moment, uh, visiting a summer school was visiting a fourth grade classroom. They were designing the city, architectural design for a city. So this just speaks to the heart of the kids that we have in Tuckwell. And when I asked this through the student, what this one building they were building in the center of their design, they, they were building, um, a homeless center of support. And, um, they had teaching and they had workshops and they had, they told me all about the pain that they were designing. We talked about this, they're designing a more global person system, right? They were designing this very intentionally with homelessness in the center, um, and making sure that they were giving something to support. Um, the community and I just thought that was a really beautiful testimony to the students. And they had a whole bunch of, I mean, it's the mayor's office and everything. And I think, uh, for me, working on fourth grade and learning, for them to all come together, keep through, really think about what kind of city that they want to see themselves. And it, it really showed the values, uh, what they believe is important. So I just want to say to that, that was just a really special time. I walked out of there really, really grateful for a long time. All right, thank you. That results to the AP College Board reports. Any additional questions you folks have this one?
I was, um, curious, we've, we've been, um, seeing a steady decline in the number of, um. Uh, students, um, taking AP STEM courses, um, science and math. And not getting the. Uh, three on the exam. And so the answer is, well, they're moving to college in the high school classes. So I'm curious, which can make sense because they have a. A bigger chance of getting, uh, college credit, uh, in that kind of situation versus an AP. If you pass the AP course with a three, then a test you may have to go depend on which college you go to, you know, what you, whether you get credit or not. So I'm curious, what are the college in the high school? I didn't think we had a lot of college in the high school in, in science and math. What are those courses that they're all taking now?
I believe it's calculus and pre-calculus is either added last year or it's going to be added this year. And they're moving into ELA now as well.
Are there any science courses?
Not yet. Those, uh, so for science, um, those, uh, predominantly those classes are CTE. And they're articulated with local, uh, uh, post-secondary institutions, local. And so if students pass those courses, they will get credit, uh, dual credit at the college that we have the articulation agreement with.
Does the, uh, the class like biomedical sciences and advanced biomedical?
Yeah. Yeah, advanced biomedical is articulated through Shoreline Community College, they have a program. And, um, many of our other media arts are through High Line College.
So we're probably going to need, I don't think we've ever had a report before because we've never had that many college in the high school courses before. But we probably need now then a report on college in the high school, uh, how many, how many courses there are, how many students there are. You know, what the trends are, all that kind of stuff, if we're kind of moving in that, in that direction. So which sounds entirely reasonable, but yeah, so I guess we kind of need to see that data as well.
Yeah, Dr. Dino and I have been working on, um, this whole project, uh, college and a high school foster.
Yeah, it's good.
We could potentially get that added, um, for a future change of. Yeah. Item whenever it feels ready or. Okay, any other additional questions here? Okay, so brings us to our monthly, monthly status, uh, budget status report for June and July. Any additional questions on this one? Okay, um, seeing that, great. Sorry that you haven't got on the way. Um, early withdrawal report, so. Silly question, probably. When we say early withdrawal, what is that? What, what, what is it? Where, how's the early defined?
Before, before the end of school.
Before the end of school, so anytime basically in the school year.
Correct.
Before the last of school, okay. Any additional questions here? Okay, um, great. And then lastly is the staff report. Yeah, which is, uh, exit interviews and whatever you want to think of. Um, just want to again, sure to congratulate her, like, she put a very, um, very thorough report. I feel like I gained a lot of insight, well, a lot of things that maybe didn't, well, particularly new. Um, but I think it's always, um, really powerful to hear and see, um, you know, the, the experiences to. Want to think so, so thanks for, thanks for that. I think it was just part of our great insight. Um, and just like the last one, I appreciate, um, that you already got some things on your mind about, um, you know, these are clear actions related to. Um, to, like, there's a lot of the things that we came up with, so thank you.
So I appreciate, I think, um, this is the first time that we've had. Uh, over fifty percent staff of color and particularly over forty percent teachers. Uh, BIPOC staff in the district, so, uh, congratulations. I mean, we were kind of floating around twenty-five, thirty percent for a number of years. So obviously there's been some good work done in, in that area. Um, and I also appreciate, uh, this is, um, the report in terms of it actually lays out. You know, what the goals were last year and whether we achieved them or didn't achieve them. So, uh, that unfortunately we don't get that very often. So anyway, I appreciate this. And, and I think, you know, the celebration is that we're, we're moving up in terms of the BIPOC staff. So thanks for the report. Yes, great.
Any additional thoughts, questions? All right, um, so before we get to our action items, we get to do an open. Very exciting. Um, okay, so I'm not going to stand by you, it's okay. Um, and I'm, so that we can read this together. And I may have got to do it, so. Um, all right, so I'm gonna, uh, read and repeat, Captain. All right, I, I'm Booster.
Hi, how is Booster?
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
Do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And will do the best, uh, sorry, and will do to the best of my ability, oh my gosh, I have to remember it though. Let me try it again. And will do the best of my judgment, skill and ability.
And will do the best of my judgment, skill and ability.
Truly faithfully diligently and impartially.
Truly faithfully diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office of the Tuckwell School District Student Representative to the Board of Directors.
Perform the duties of the, perform the duties of the office of the Tuckwell School District Student Representative to the Board of Directors.
In and for King County, Washington, as such duties are prescribed by law.
In and for King County, Washington, as such duties are prescribed by law and policy.
All right, congratulations. Okay, having done two of these now, it makes things like easier to do like a repeat thing. One, I would want to, one sentence paragraph. If you can, yeah. Um, really, really exciting and I, um, you know, I think we would be, um. I'm amazed that we didn't take that opportunity also to just thank you, Dennis, for the incredibly worth it. Well, we, have you, like, did you really just step into this role and become, I mean, you are so, so committed, so intelligent. Like you bring so much to the table, um, but you have, I think, increased awareness about ways in which other folks, um, can really engage in, in this work. And, um, I know you did a lot of work last year to, um, really make this role, um, not only more appealing. Because it can, now it's set up as an opportunity to receive some credit. Um, but it's, um, also just, you know, I think again, just show as a, as a really great model of, um, the, um. The importance of having your roles here. Um, so thank you for all your, yeah. Um, excited about, um, about this year. All right, so brings us to our action items. Um, so the first is approval of the Human Resources Staffing Report.
So move.
Okay, all in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so next is approval of the district assessment calendar for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Second.
Um, uh, just, let me take any questions or comments on this one. Okay, all in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, um, next is approval of the strategic plan for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Um, uh. So I'd like to motion for that, so.
Second.
Um, just wanted to make a super quick comment. I am, uh, this has been a very long journey of getting this strategic plan. Um, the strategic planning time has come and gone, which we were strategic planning for. Um, but just, I'm, I'm, I'm so grateful for, um, you know, I think. For, 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 for coming in back for Rosa and, and taking this, this, this thing that has been in the works for so long. And engaging the full team in the way that you did to, to come back and give us something that I think is much closer, um, more tangible, right? to come back and give us something that I think is much closer, um more tangible, right? Um than than what we've seen in the last few iterations of of this. So I'm appreciative for that. And I think more importantly, um the the collaborative nature with which you got here. Um I I think it's what um we as a district have needed. Um and I look forward to uh continuing to see the ways in which that collaboration just makes us just continue to be just be more and more awesome. We we search. The living breathing down, yes, it's a living breathing down, so go ahead.
So I've got um, let's see, the one uh question, uh yeah, I think this is a good, um I mean, part of the problem is you know, that is kind of focusing focusing things down a little bit. It's something I have uh so many things. And one of the things that I don't see here, and I I guess you've you're working on a kind of a dashboard for the strategic plan, which you kind of sent out. Um the group that, so the board uh budget priorities for a number of years have included the the group of um two or more grade levels behind. And I think, I think I'd like to see that um uh instead of thinking your current one, you have ELL, MLL instead, then those could be good too, but uh you know, I I'm a believer in kind of targeted universalism. So you you find the students that are the farthest away from educational attainment and you raise them up, focus on them, raise them up. And then the whole system raises up as a result of that. And uh so yeah, I I when we're talking about uh actually the I-ready scores and stretch goal for third and seventh grade, that's, I think that's what we need to be focusing on, so.
Okay, thank you. Um all right, so all in favor of approving um this strategic plan?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, very excited. Um was a big step. Okay, um next is approval of the meal prices for twenty-three, twenty-four. So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um great, next is approval of the resolution number nine three four, which is the extension of the interfund loan.
So moved.
This one is confusing to me. I thought we were going to pay off one of, so we have two outstanding loans. One of them um and both of them for eight hundred thousand dollars. And I thought one of them we were gonna pay off at the end of this month. And then the other one, we pay off at the end of next February, I think. And I don't, that's not what I'm reading in these, in these resolutions, so.
So the resolution, so correct, so the resolution only speaks to one because we're extending one. The other one is following the normal process, which means it will be paid by August thirty-first. That's why this one only reference one because we're only extending one. There was no need to do anything with the other one because it was already um projected to be paid eight thirty-one.
Which so that was
That was the one that we saw.
That was resolution nine thirty-three?
Or re potentially, yes. Um I would have to look at it, but it was the one that was done in June.
Right.
Yes, that's the one that we're paying off on the thirty-first. And then we're pushing the other one out until February.
But the nine thirty-three says said loans to be repaid within a year from the date of this resolution, which is twenty-seven June twenty-two-three. So that would say it would be paid off in uh June of twenty-two-four.
I would need to go back and look because I believe I thought I put a specific date on that. And that's why I brought this back um to move forward with extending one of them because the language says you have up into a year. Um but it was, um the intention was to pay it off prior to that. So I would have to look at the language because I never intended for either of them to be extended for a full year. Um but obviously circumstances change, so I will need to look at that resolution.
Okay, cause I mean, what we want to do is um is have one of them paid off in February of twenty-two-four.
And the other one's getting paid at the end of this month.
Yeah. Okay, so this one, we're just saying, okay, we're gonna pay in twenty-two-four. Yeah, I would I would request to go go back and look at nine thirty-three and see if that's I don't think that's really what, I don't think it says we're paying it off at the end of this month. So
Okay.
you can do that one and then bring it back if it's needed. Okay.
Okay, um all right, so all in favor of approving this interfund loan?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then lastly is approval of resolution number nine three five, which is about coming to twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Can we comment?
Comments, yes, please. Even though it's true, we're concerned about this, but I just had a not senior two, or this way nineteen contracts and consultants and specialized programs, which is what we appreciate. And I'm confident in Kasi is making certain that budget needs are going to be addressed and that any um reductions made will have the least possible impact for our students. So with, even though we're reluctant, um I feel confident that we're well developed, so.
Yeah, I think I think I heard enough um in terms of intention of you know, process and looking at other things because we need to get out of this um this deep hole that we're in. I mean, we're not the only ones in this deep hole, but uh we need to get out of it. So appreciate the work that will get done in that arena over the next year.
I bet you have to make us do that. Yeah, and 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 I'll just read the rate, um something that Dr. Perdosa just said earlier, we're gonna be having um at 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 minimum, two work sessions, one one in the next um uh month or two and then another later at the beginning of next year. Um and we invite you to please come to those work sessions. Um if you aren't able to attend the work session, um we are going to be building in time for public comment at those work sessions. Um so you can submit written public comment, you can come and give public comment. Um it can also, it's also going to be a conversation uh at those work sessions. We want and need to hear from as many folks um in the planning process as possible, um so that we don't get to the next August when we need to approve this budget. And um and and then we're very, very concerned, we, so please, I invite you to come to those things. Um if you, again, if you can't attend and you don't have any thoughts going in, please listen to those recordings. They're available a day or two after the meeting. Um this board has an incredible job of getting those up and accessible to folks. Then you can listen to the discussion that happens in those work sessions and then email the board and give us your thoughts. Um uh so please, please, please engage in that way. Um all right, so um all in favor of approving uh this budget?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, uh it stands approved. Thank you. All right, um so this brings us to our second opportunity for public comment this evening. Um whether it's a hand or a clear. Um so definitely if you would like to offer something, um reach your hand back up on so that we can get you uh over there. Um and then if anyone else would like to offer a public comment, um you can use that race. Yeah, you can also just type your name in the chat um in this board and make sure that you have the permissions you need to um to speak. So I'd like to welcome Emily.
Hi, uh thank you. Um my name is Emily Mizoney, and I would like to comment on the discussions surrounding placing an SRO in Tiquilla School District. Uh although I understand the fears surrounding gun violence, especially in our community where it's particularly prevalent, uh I disagree that an SRO should be placed in our schools. Um according to a twenty-fourteen analysis of federal data by the Education Week Research Center, um black students make up fifteen point five percent of school enrollment nationwide. Yet they comprise thirty-three point four percent of students arrested in schools. And so as a community member, I do fear that placing an SRO in the Tiquilla School District will increase the referrals to law enforcement, setting up our most vulnerable stu- students for failure. Um according to the School of Education, introducing SROs increases the frequency of students being reported to law enforcement. Uh furthermore, many of our students come to us with trauma associated with law enforcement officers in general. As many of our students are immigrants and uh students of color. And for many of our students, schools are safe haven. And according to a twenty-nineteen study by Tulane University, only forty percent of black students feel safer in the presence of police. So I urge you to prioritize the mental well-being of our students of color and please consider if the benefits of placing a law enforcement officer in Tiquilla schools truly outweighs the downsides as this discussion moves forward in future meetings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Emily. Or are there any additional public comments? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move to our journey.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you so much.
Good night, everybody.